All right, good evening. I'd like to call the Zoning Board of Appeals for Tuesday, March 5th, 2024 to order. Will the city call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. This is the call.
Here.
Mr. Friedman?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Libbit?
Present.
Mr. Havas. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any communications?
None at this time.
Okay, thank you. So we will move into the public hearing. Let me just briefly describe how we conduct business for those of you who maybe haven't joined us before. We'll call the case by the case number. City will read a brief summary of the case. Then we ask the appellant to step up to the podium at the microphone and make sure you speak right into the microphones. They're pretty sensitive. There's also a sign-in sheet there. If you'll sign in with your name and address and then explain to the board what you're asking for and why. Then the city will read the findings of fact. We'll ask you to agree with those facts or add any other facts at that time. Then the city will make a recommendation. And then you also can speak after the recommendation. Then we'll open it for public comment. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak on a case, that would be their opportunity to do so. And then we will turn it over to the board to make a decision and then move on to the next case. So, will the city call the first case, please?
Yes, ma'am. Case 23-24. The appellant, Sue White, from Sign Fabricators, representing the owner of Lockdale Properties, is requesting the following waivers from the board. A variance for one additional garden ground sign, two proposed, one allowed. The property is located on the south side of 12 Mile Road between Lockdale Street and Telegraph Road at 24725 West 12 Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel 2417201063, Zoned OS Office Services. This appeals to Article 7, Section 8.55, Section 2, Chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the signed ordinance.
Thank you. Is the appellant here? Hi. If you would step up to the microphone and if you would both state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello. My name's Evan Goiki. I'm representing Sign Fabricators, or Sue White today. Sue's the owner of Sign Fabricators.
Okay. Can you pull the microphone right to ya?
Yeah.
Up, yeah.
And then, the address for our Sign Fabricators, 43984, North Grossbeck Highway. It's in Clinton Township.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Devin Crum, representing Lockdale Properties LLC.
Okay. And could you just state the address, too, please?
812 South Main Street, Royal Oaks, Suite 200. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, and can you explain to us what you're asking for and why, please?
Sure, yes. So we are the owner of the entire parcel where that Huntington Bank sits with that Lockdale Properties building in the back there. So we have a land lease with Huntington's. We have a unique situation sharing that yard. So we're looking to do an additional sign on the 12 Mile side to get some signage for our building in the back. You know, just a name of the building, you know, get some recognition from that, you know, side of the road for the office building that's well back, you know, beyond that Huntington Bank.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you want to add? No big deal if you don't, but, okay, will the city read the findings of fact?
Yes, ma'am. Findings of fact for ZBA Case 23-24. The appellant, Sue White, from Sign Fabricators, representing the owner of Lockdale Properties, is requesting the following waivers from the board. A variance for one additional garden ground sign, two proposed, one allowed. The property is located on the south side of 12 Mile Road between Lockdale Street and Telegraph Road at 24725 West 12 Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel 2417201063, Zoned OS Office Services. This appeals to Article 7, Section 8.55, Subsection 2, Chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the signed ordinance. To the north across 12 Mile Road, the property is Zoned RE, single-family residential, O-Rise, and is occupied by apartments. To the east of is Zoned B3, general business, occupied by a fast food restaurant. To the south of property is Zoned B3, general business, and is occupied by auto dealership. To the west across Lockdale Street, the property is owned by RC Regional Center and is occupied by a large office complex. The subject property is Zoned OS Office Services and has two buildings on a single parcel. The building in front of West 12 Mile Road is Huntington Bank, which is 6,240 square foot, one-story range bank. The second building to the south is 109,45 square feet, three-story office building. The site has vehicular entrances and exits along West 12 Mile Road and two vehicular entrance exits along Lockdale Street. A survey of signage at the site reveals the following signs. 131 square foot, two-sided legal-conforming garden ground sign in front of Huntington Bank perpendicular through 12 Mile Road. 148 square foot, legal-conforming wall sign on the front of Huntington Bank facing 12 Mile Road. And 120 square foot, legal-conforming wall sign on the front of the three-story office building to the south facing West 12 Mile Road. The appellant is requesting a variance for one additional 48 square foot, six foot, five foot high, two-sided garden ground sign along West 12 Mile Road, two requested, one allowed.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, all right. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is for favorable consideration for the waiver requesting one additional garden ground sign, one allowed to propose. This recommendation is based on the following. Due to the unique shape of the property and the location of the two buildings on the parcel which the signs are proposed, the strict application of regulations would result in practical difficulty or undue hardship to the owner. Such relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of the signed ordinance. The purpose, the proposed sign are consistent with the spirit and intent of the signed ordinance and as the regulations which apply to the zoning districts. The proposed signs are keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect on adjacent or surrounding properties. And the proposed signs will not interfere with or be objectionable from the standpoint of traffic safety.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add before we open public comment?
Thank you. We agree it is within the spirit. Thank you, Wayne.
All right, thank you. All right, so we will open public comment on this case. If you're here to speak on this case, this would be your opportunity. And seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Friedman?
I have no issues with it.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
I have no issues with it either.
Thank you. Ms. Libbit?
I don't have any issues. I do have a question. Is it six feet high or five feet high?
Five feet high. Madam Chair, do the chair. It's a five-foot high, that was a misprint on the finding of fact. And they proposed a five-foot sign.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds okay.
And also, the, I missed your name. Your Sue White stand-in?
Evan Goiki.
Again?
Evan.
Evan Goiki.
Thank you.
He is listed in the application.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I agree with my colleagues. I don't have a concern about this sign request. So, Mr. Rogers, would you make a motion for us?
Sure. In regards to ZBA Case Number 23-24, the appellant, Sue White, from Sign Fabricators, representing the owner of Lockdale Properties, is requesting the following waivers from the board. A variance for one additional garden ground sign, two proposed, one allowed. The property is located on the south side of 12 Mile Road between Lockdale Street and Telegraph Road at 24725 West 12 Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel 24-17-201-063, Zoned OS Office Services. I make a motion to accept, approve this variance for one additional garden ground sign. I make this motion based on the following. Due to the unique shape of the property and the location of the two buildings on the parcel which the signs are proposed, the strict application of the regulations would result in practical difficulties or undue hardship to the owner. Such relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of the signed ordinance. The proposed signs are consistent with the spirit and the intent of the signed ordinance and the regulations which apply to the zoning district. And the proposed signs are in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect on adjacent or surrounding properties.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Your request is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Continue to work with the city and with your permit and whatnot. All right, will the city call the next case, please?
Yes, ma'am. Zoning Board of Appeals Case 24-01. The appellant, Evan Goiki, Sign Fabricators LLC, representing the owner of Lockdale North NW LLC, is requesting the following waiver from the board. A variance for five additional tenant signs on an existing garden ground sign, three allowed, eight proposed. The property is located on the south side of Northwest Highway between Beck Road and Franklin Road at 28625 Northwestern Highway, Sidwell Parcel 2418276041, Zoned B1 Neighborhood Business District. This appeal is to Article 9, Section 8.57, Chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the signed ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Is the appellant here? If you could again, state your name and address for the record, please.
Evan Goiki. Address is 43984 North Grossbeck Highway in Clinton Township.
Thank you.
Devin Crum, 12 Northwest LLC, 812 South Main Street, Suite 200, Royal Oaks, Michigan, 48067.
Thank you. And can you explain to the board what you're asking for and why, please?
Sure. So here, we are requesting to have more tenant panels to display. It's a multi-tenant office building. I think what was granted in the past, it may have been a single user. So right now, we already have just one user in there. And I know we're going to have a couple more. So if, worst case, we're requesting up to eight panels to rework it to at least, you know, four of the small signs on the bottom and then four small up top, or up to six, as you see displayed here. It would just be business tenant names for that multi-tenant office building.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Findings of fact, ZBA Case 24-01. The appellant, Evan Goiki, Sign Fabricators LLC, representing the owner of Lockdale NW LLC, is requesting the following waivers from the board. A variance for five additional tenant signs and an existing garden ground sign, three allowed, eight proposed. The property is located south side of Northwest Highway between Beck Road and Franklin Road at 28625 Northwestern Highway, Sidwell Parcel 24-18-276-041, Zoned B1 Neighborhood Business District. This appeals to the Article, Section, Article 9, Section 8.57, Chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the signed ordinance. To the north of the subject property is Zoned B1, a neighborhood business and is occupied by a strip mall. To the west across Franklin Road, the property is owned by RC, attached, single-family residential and is occupied by apartments and condos. To the south, to the south of the property is Zoned OS Office Services and is occupied by an office complex. To the east, the property is Zoned B1 Neighborhood Business and is occupied by a developed strip mall. The subject property is Zoned B1, general business, was built in 1988 and is a 31,647 square foot, two-story office building. The site has one vehicular entrance along the Northwest Highway Front and one vehicular entrance along the Franklin Road entrance. A survey of signage at the site reveals one legal-conforming garden ground sign. The appellant is requesting a variance for five additional tenant signs and an existing garden ground sign, three allowed, eight proposed.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other facts you would like to add at this time?
No, thank you.
Okay. Well, the city read the staff recommendation, please.
Yes, ma'am. Staff recommendation is for favorable consideration for the variance requesting five additional tenant signs and an existing garden ground sign, three allowed, eight proposed. This recommendation is based on the following. Due to the size of the additional tenant signage and the proportion to the size and location of the sign, the strict application of the regulation would result in practical difficulty to the appellant. Granting the waiver does not create substantial detriment to the public good and does not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the signed ordinance. The proposed sign is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties. The proposed sign will not interfere with or be objectionable from the standpoint of traffic safety.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add?
Well, thank you.
Okay, so we will open public comment on this case. Again, this would be your opportunity to step forward if you wish to speak on this case. Seeing none, we will close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Rogers?
I don't have a problem with this.
Okay. Ms. Libbit?
No, it's straightforward.
Okay. Mr. Friedman?
I have no issues with it.
All right. I'm a little concerned that the force, if it becomes eight, that it's not going to be readable. I mean, I feel like eight might be too much. Again, Northwestern is like 50 miles an hour at that place, where people are also picking up to get on the highway. I don't know, I'm a little concerned about eight. So, do you think it's more likely to be four or six?
As I look at it, is your concern the size of the smaller panel?
Yeah.
So I see, you know, we've got quite a bit of real estate on the sign, per se, so maybe I could make them a little bit bigger. I could go maybe three and a half by one and a half, you know, maybe I could even stretch it to four, if that would still fit within the variance. But, in all reality, I think we're hopefully going to have, you know, up to like four tenants, maybe. So I think, you know, I felt like six gave me some cushion, eight definitely did, so, you know, yep.
I mean, does anybody else drive over there? I mean, it's already, it already, it looks just like this with the top two long panels, right? It's kind of what it looks like right now.
Correct, yeah. We stopped after we couldn't do more than three.
I understand your concern, I just think that, you know, the lettering being too small would be maybe a traffic concern. But, you know, our concern is with sign proliferation. It would be bad business for making it small.
That's true.
And, you know, if we allow this as a matter of sign proliferation, should be up to them to make sure it's an effective sign. I don't think there's any rules against, you know, if you have your legal sign, make it.
I was just going, I mean, I know there's a couple, like, signs that obviously are not in Southfield, but as you're like driving north on Telegraph, and, you know, there's like eight panels, and it's like trying to like read through them as you're going 50 miles an hour is like nearly impossible. So, I guess that's my only, I would say, be cautious and conscious of that as you're coming up with what goes on those signs, I guess. Like, as large a block letters as possible.
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, I get people want their logos, but sometimes logos are not great from a sign perspective at that size, so. All right, Ms. Libbit, you want to make a motion for us?
Regarding Case 24-01, the appellant, Evan Goiki, Sign Fabricators LLC, representing the owner of 12 Northwest LLC, is requesting the following waiver from the board. A variance for five additional tenant signs and an existing garden ground sign, three allowed, eight proposed. The property is located on the south side of Northwest Highway between Beck Road and Franklin Road at 28625 Northwestern Highway, Sidwell Parcel Number 24-18-276-041, Zoned B1 Neighborhood Business District. I move that a variance for five additional tenant signs and an existing garden ground sign, three allowed, eight proposed, be approved. This recommendation is based on the following. Due to the size of the additional tenant signage and the proportion to the size and location of the sign, that strict application of the regulation would result in practical difficulty to the appellant. Granting the waiver does not create substantial detriment to the public good and does not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the sign or ordinance. The proposed sign is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties. The proposed sign will not interfere with or be objectionable from the standpoint of traffic safety. I so move.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye? Aye. All right, your request is granted. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, well, the city call the next case, please.
Zoning Board of Appeals Case 23-19. The appellant, James Henley, agent representing the Archdiocese of Detroit, owner, is requesting the following temporary use permit to allow a proposed modular office trailer on the property during renovation of the Holy Sepulcher Administration Building. The property is located on the north side of 10 Mile Road between Wake Cross and McAllister Streets, Sidwell Parcel 2419200006, Zoned RE, single-family residential. This appeals to Section 5.198, Article 23, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, my name is Matthew Slicker. I'm a local attorney clerk. My, our address is 555 Hewlett Drive, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan.
Okay. Do we have Matthew authorized? I didn't.
Jim Henley wasn't able to make it tonight. He had something come up and I'm phoning for Jim.
Yeah, we would have to reach him to authorize you, or reach, who else signed this? Yeah, James signed the application, and then Bob Ojnacki authorized James. So, we need to reach one of them, unfortunately, in order to authorize you to speak on behalf of them.
Who?
If you look.
Am I missing something?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Property authorization. There's a form here.
Yeah, Bob authorizes James.
Mm-hmm.
But you're not Bob, right?
I'm not Bob, no.
He's not Bob, and he's not James.
Oh, and he's not, okay.
No.
No, I'm not.
Pardon me.
So, do we have contact information for somebody?
I got Jim's number, I can tell.
Yeah, James's phone number's in here, in the application.
Mm-hmm.
Do you see it? Okay. We'll just try to reach him real quick. Unfortunately, we have to do this every once in a while just to make sure we're...
I'm just asking him.
To authorize him on the record. Yeah, to authorize Mac.
Slicker. He knows something. Hopefully he answers, because he won't see your number. We got a call from Mike, and he'll know my name's coming up.
Yeah, you can call. Don't worry about it.
We just want it on the record. Come to some microphone.
Can you take it off speaker?
No, we want it on record. He's not going to answer. We'll call a couple times, right? Thought we were taking care of it.
He's surrounded in the first place. Yeah, unfortunately, that's why...
You're going to be a voicemail.
No, it isn't either. So we'd have to table until the next meeting and he'd have to...
Yeah, we can give him a few minutes, too. We do some, we'd call back in a minute or two.
You want to move on to your other items?
What about his email?
We could.
What about his email? Maybe emailing? It may or may not work, or send him a text.
Yeah, I mean, we could try email, too, if he responded to an email quickly.
No, he'll respond to a text message quicker.
Okay. All right, so, yeah, I mean, we can, we don't have a motion to table, so we can go through a couple other items and then come back to it in a couple minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're gonna hold that and move to our minutes for January 16th. Did anybody have any changes or concerns?
No.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for January 16th?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved. And then, it looks like we have a couple upcoming meetings. So, who wants to speak to those?
Hi, Ken. So, on March 19th, we do have a special meeting. We only got him one case, so he did pay to hold that meeting. And it's commercial, it's a setback variance for building addition. On April 2nd, we're going to have residential and a commercial case. The residential case is a setback variance for an attached garage that they would like to build. And then, that commercial case is parking space variance. They, they're lacking parking spaces required.
Okay, and has that meeting closed at this point?
Yes.
Or, time is closed, okay.
Yes, so, the next meeting would be April 16th, is what's...
Okay.
For, I don't have anything for that yet.
Nothing for that question. Okay, sounds good. All right, looks like we might be ready, so can I have a motion to take 23, or to put 2319 back on the table? All right, can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so it sounds like we have James on the line.
Hi, James, this is Nicole with City of Southfield. Hi, we have Matt here for the ZBA variance request, and we just need you to authorize that he can represent you for the meeting.
Absolutely, please do, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, yeah, of course. Okay, so, we did that, we did that. Okay, can you explain to us what you're asking for and why, please?
Yeah, so, the Archdiocese is planning their addition over at the building that you see there. And in the interim, they also have office space on the south side of 10 Mile Road in the plaza at the southeast corner beach and 10 Mile Road. Their lease is running out, and the reason was they were going to build additions to move those people over. Right now, the addition's gone through site plan approval, it's received that, it's going to be in for engineering approval, which is already done. They're in the programming phase of the funding for the building to move it forward. And interim, they'd like to request to use this building, to put the trailer on there just for office space use. It doesn't have any public use. It's for just office only that they're going to be using it for.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
For ZBA Case 23-19, the appellant, James Henley, agent representing the Archdiocese of Detroit, owner, is requesting the following from the board. Temporary use permit to allow a modular office trailer on the property during renovation of the Holy Sepulcher Administration Building. The property is located on the north side of 10 Mile Road between Wake Cross and McAllister Streets, Sidwell Parcel 2419200006, Zoned RE, single-family residential. The property is currently developed with the Holy Sepulcher Cemetery. The properties to the north are crossed 11 Mile Road and are Zoned RC Regional Center and are developed with various commercial office buildings. The properties to the south, across 10 Mile Road, are Zoned RE, single-family residential, OS Office Service, and B3 General Business, and are developed with single-family homes, offices, and retail commercial businesses. The properties to the east are Zoned R2, single-family residential, developed with single-family homes and the Christian Tabernacle Church. RE, single-family residential, developed with single-family homes fronting McAllister Street. An OS Office Service and P vehicular parking, developed with the For Kids' Sake Montessori School. Properties to the west are Zoned TVR, television, radio, office studio, and RE, single-family residential, and are developed with WKBD, undeveloped property owned by the Southfield School District, and single-family homes within the Edgewood Hills subdivision, respectively. The site contains 372.83 acres of land with 1,653 feet of frontage on 10 Mile Road and a depth of 5,310 feet. The applicant is proposing a 10-foot by 44-foot, 440-square-foot temporary office trailer to house current employees during the construction of a building addition to Holy Sepulcher's existing administration building. The hours of use will be Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The applicant is planning on installing the temporary trailer as soon as possible. They do not have an estimated construction start date for the admin building at this They do not have an estimated construction start date for the admin building at this time. The nearest property to the proposed trailer location is the daycare site to the southwest. The proposed temporary trailer is over two hundred and eighty-five feet from the edge of the parking lot and will be shielded from the daycare property by a heavy buffer consisting of mature trees at the common property line. The nearest residential property fronting McAllister is over three hundred and twenty feet to the northeast and is also screened with a heavy buffer of mature trees along the common property line, as well as in the backyard of the residence. Further, the residential lot is very deep, so the home itself is over seven hundred feet from the temporary trailer location.
Great, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
I don't, I don't believe the trailer will be visible from Ten Mile Road or any of the other neighboring parcels.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff's recommendation is to approve with the following conditions. This temporary use approval is good for one year from March fifth, twenty twenty-four, until March fifth, twenty twenty-five. If the appellant wishes to obtain an additional one-year approval, two years total possible maximum, they must appear back before the board prior to March fifth, twenty twenty-five. The site must be restored to its prior condition after conclusion of the temporary use. If any complaints are made or issues arise from activity at the site, the appellant will be required to appear back before this board to discuss how the issues will be mitigated. A plan indicating tree protection of the existing pine and magnolia trees to the west of the proposed trailer must be submitted to the planning department, approved and inspected by the planning department prior to building permit issuance. All relevant building department and engineering permits and approvals must be obtained prior to commencement of construction. This recommendation is based upon the following. The proposed temporary use will not adversely affect the character of the area and will not be injurious to the surrounding neighborhood nor contrary to the spirit and purpose of the zoning ordinance. The proposed site improvements will provide adequate protection to abutting uses due to the distance away from abutting properties, heavily wooded, natural buffers, and conditions that the city is requiring as part of this case.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add at this point?
No, I don't.
Okay, sounds good. We will open public comment. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment, turn it over to the board. Ms. Libbit?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, Mr. Rogers?
I'm okay with it.
Mr. Friedman?
I am okay with it. I just have one question, I guess, to the city regarding the proposed addition that they, about the tree protection plan. Why can't they cut down their trees?
If I might, through the chair, Mr. Friedman. They would, they are, they've already submitted a plan for tree removal for the admin building and the parking lot expansion that's also happening. So we have a very detailed tree removal and replacement plan. The trees that they are, that are most immediately surrounding the temporary use, they're planning on keeping and retaining. So, in order to prevent damage to the roots and avoid having to have them replace them if they end up dying from the construction activity, we have a requirement that tree protection fencing has to be installed around the drip line of the trees. So they're, they're, they're aware of this.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't have any concerns. I, well, I guess my only concern is that, just to make it clear, just to everybody involved, that it is a one-year temporary and that they do have to come back before the board if they need it beyond a year from today.
That's understood, yes.
Yeah, okay. And especially just since there's not a construction schedule kickoff yet. I think it's important to really be aware of that.
Will you make a motion, Mr. Friedman?
Sure. The appellant, James Henley, represented by
Matt Slicker.
Matt Sager.
S- Slicker.
Matt Sager, Representative Archdiocese of Detroit owner, is requesting the following waiver from the board. Temporary use permit, temporary office trailer on the property during renovation of the Holy Sepulcher Administration Building. The property is located on the north side of Ten Mile Road between Wake Cross and McAllister Streets, Sidwell Parcel number two four one nine two zero 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 six, Zoned RE Single Family Residential. I move that we approve the waiver with following addition. That this is a temporary use approval, approved for one year from March fifth, twenty twenty-four, until March sixth, twenty twenty-five. The appellant wishes, which is their additional one-year approval. They have appeared before prior to March fifth, twenty twenty. And that the site, the addition, the site must be restored to its prior condition after conclusion of the temporary use. And if any complaints are made or issues arise from the activity, the appellant will be required to appear back before the board to discuss how the issue will be mitigated. And that a plan indicating tree protection of existing pine and magnolia trees to the west of the proposed trailer will be submitted to the planning department, approved and inspected by the planning department prior to building issuance. And that all relevant building department, building department and engineering permits and approvals be obtained prior to commencement of construction. Recommendation based on the fact that the proposed temporary use will not adversely affect the character of the area and the surrounding neighborhood, contrary to the spirit purposes of the ordinance. And the proposed segments will provide adequate protection to abutted uses of these existing buildings and abutted properties, heavily wooded, natural buffers, and conditions that is required for harnessing of this case.
Great, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too.
Okay, so that closes our public hearing. And then, we've already cleared our minutes and talked about our upcoming meetings. So then, we do have something under miscellaneous. Looks like we received a letter on a case that we had tabled. So I think we need a motion to take the case off the table, or put it back on the table. Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a request to dismiss this case without prejudice. Any discussion? Okay, so, can I have a motion? All right, can I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so case twenty-three twenty-three has been dismissed without prejudice. And any other miscellaneous? All right, seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? And a second?
Second.
All right, we are adjourned.